All right, it is approximately 6:05 PM. Meeting of the Frederick County School Board will come to order. Madam Vice Chair, what is the pleasure of the board this evening?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Looks like we have an agenda before us. Would you like to make a motion to approve?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the agenda and when it is properly seconded, is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move that the County School Board of Frederick County, Virginia, enter a closed-session meeting for the following. Number one, to review and discuss administrative appointments, information only, resignations, substitutes, tutors, and volunteers pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711, Paragraph A, Subparagraph 1, and to review and discuss individual student matters that would involve specific students and particular information contained in their scholastic records, including requests for the release from compulsory attendance for religious reasons pursuant to Virginia Code 2.2-3711, Paragraph A, Subparagraph 2, and to discuss or consider the acquisition of real property for a public purpose, such property being located in the Opeckin Magisterial District outside the limits of the City of Winchester where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711, Paragraph A, Subparagraph 3.
All right, a motion has been made to move to closed session. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion has been forwarded and properly seconded. Any discussion? Dan and I, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, we will be in closed session and return at approximately 7:00 PM. Madam Vice Chair, what is the pleasure of the board?
Madam, thank you, Mr. Chair. I move that the board reconvene from closed session.
Second.
We have a motion to reconvene from closed session. Has been properly seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
And, Mr. Chair, I move that to the best of each board member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act were discussed in the closed session and only such public business matters were identified in the motion by which the closed session was convened, were heard, discussed, or considered by the school board. As a result, seeing as how we concluded early, I move that the board recess until its official meeting at 7:00.
Point of order. We have to still certify the closed-session vote?
No. Thank you, Mr. Atkins. And so I move to certify the closed session.
Second.
Miss White?
Yes.
Mr. Funas?
Yes.
Mr. Atkins?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Klein?
Yes.
Mrs. Sturdivan?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
If I may.
Sir. Yeah, so go ahead and continue with the motions that are coming out of closed session.
My turn.
The motions.
Oh.
So that's, mhm, that's the vice chair.
And, Mr. Chair, we have several motions coming out of closed session. I move to approve the personnel actions as recommended by the superintendent.
Second. We have a motion to approve the personnel actions as recommended by the superintendent and properly seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
And, Mr. Chair, I have another motion. I move to approve the release of Student A from compulsory attendance for religious reasons.
Second. All right, we have a motion to approve the release of Student A from compulsory attendance and it has been properly seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
And then, Mr. Chair, I would recommend that we go ahead with the motion as we discuss to add the item to the agenda and then go into recess.
I move that the board amend the adopted agenda to include the purchase of real property located off Fairfax Pike in the Opeckin Magisterial District identified as Tax Map Number 86-A-117A under Unfinished Business.
Second. Okay, we have a motion that has been properly seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
And, Mr. Chair, I move that the board recess its meeting until 7:00 PM.
Second. All right, we have a motion to recess and it has been properly seconded. Any discussion? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We will recess until 7:00 o'clock. All right, it is approximately 7:03 and we are returning from recess. Madam Vice Chair?
Mr. Chair, I move that the board reconvene its meeting.
Second. We have a motion to reconvene and it has been properly seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are now in session. If you would, please stand and recite the Pledge of Allegiance with us, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in
Next is the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second. All right, we have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented and it has been properly seconded. Is there any discussion on that? No discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We have a consent agenda.
And, Mr. Chair, I do have some proclamations to read specifically for our SROs.
Madam Vice Chair.
Thank you. Proclamation, School Resource Officer Appreciation Day, which was February 15th. Whereas, school resource officers, SROs, bridge gaps between youth and law enforcement and embrace a triad concept of school policing, serving in informal counseling, education, and law enforcement roles to support students and communities they serve. Whereas, school resource officers continuously lead by example and promote a positive image of law enforcement to schoolchildren and school communities. Whereas, school resource officers create safe learning environments, provide valuable resources to school staff members, foster positive relationships with students, and develop strategies to resolve problems that affect youth with the goal of protecting all children so they can reach their fullest potential. Whereas, school resource officers are valuable and essential members of the education community and deserve unwavering respect and support from the public in the pursuit of keeping schools and students safe. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the Frederick County School Board hereby declares February 15th, 2024, as School Resource Officer Appreciation Day, a special day to show appreciation for school-based law enforcement officers and encourages all citizens to show their gratitude with displays of support and personal messages, dated this 20th day of February 2024.
Mr. Chair, if I may, if we can give them a round of applause, please. If they can come on down, please, as well.
All right, now we're at the point of our meeting for student and staff recognitions. I'll turn it over to Dr. Hummer.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chair. First up is administrative appointments, and if I would like to call up coordinator of our new coordinator of data management, Mrs. Stephanie Noel, if you don't mind coming She steps into the role of coordinator of data management in the Assessment, Reporting, and Program Evaluations Department. Since 2021, Ms. Noel has served as an accountability specialist in the school counseling office at Sherrando High School. Additionally, she has 12 years of teaching experience at the middle school levels. She has an associate's degree in arts and science from Laurel Ridge Community College, a bachelor's of science at the university, or excuse me, university studies from Shenandoah University, and a master's of science in education, also from Shenandoah University. Again, welcome and congratulations.
Well, thank you all. I'm excited to be here with you tonight. I'm very excited and very eager to get started with Dr. Roy's team in the assessment office and just ready to serve the division in a new way. So, thank you very much for the opportunity.
Thank you, welcome.
All right, Mr. Chair, can I keep going?
Yes, sir.
All right, fantastic. Good evening and welcome to our Awards of Excellence program. Before we proceed, I would like to ask that everyone stay here through the entire program out of respect for each individual who is being recognized. Once we have completed all of the presentations, you will have an opportunity to leave and enjoy the rest of your evening. In addition, when you come forward for your certificate or to be acknowledged as a school, please take a moment to pause with Mr. Sturdivan and myself for a photograph, then move to the right, remain at the front, and we'll take a photograph with the entire group being recognized. So I'd like to call the chair down with myself and we'll go ahead and start the recognitions.
The Beta Club at Orchard View Elementary is in its second year and is absolutely thriving. Fourth and fifth grade students with upstanding character and an A average are invited to participate in the club. The club focuses on building character, leadership, achievement, and serving others and their community. In addition to required service hours, weekly meetings, and being leaders in their school, several fifth-grade Beta Club members volunteered to compete at the state conference. Every student who competed placed in the top three of at least one area. These students worked hard to prepare for their competition with the help of a variety of teachers around the school. Teachers volunteered their time after school, before school, and some on weekends to make sure students had what they needed in order to be prepared for states. Congratulations to these students and their qualifying for the National Beta Conference this June in Savannah, Georgia. And again, just a reminder, students, when we call you up, please remain up front for a group picture in the end. And we're going to start off with first place in fiber art. That goes to Jillian Disney. First place in book battle, we have a team of three here tonight, Aaliyah Connors, Next up, we have a team that placed second in robotics. Three of them are here tonight with us. Achieving third place in creative writing was Kaylee Rutherford. And tonight, we have two sponsors of the group with us. The first sponsor, Connor Kingdom. And tonight with us, we have the robotics coach, who certainly helped with the group, Next up tonight, we have the Inspiration Award. The Inspiration Award is given to a staff member who did something inspirational for the student, staff, parents, or community as a whole. We have two recipients for the Inspiration Award this evening. Elena Bryant from James Wood Middle School. Ms. Bryant is the counseling registrar at James Wood Middle School. Ms. Bryant is the first person students meet upon entering the counseling office. She has a friendly face that goes above and beyond to make sure all of our students are taken care of, whether it's providing a schedule, helping them get school supplies, handing out weekly food bags, and a million other things. She is always, always has a smiling face and a positive attitude. Ms. Bryant has also been instrumental in helping families that are registering and also jumps in to help not only the counselors but all staff. She truly has been a blessing to our counseling department and school. Ms. Bryant was nominated by a staff member. Next up, we have Viviana Dodson from James Wood Middle School. Ms. Dodson is an incredibly supportive member of our staff, constantly building bridges with our parent community to support our students, particularly our ELL population. She often goes above and beyond by seeking out opportunities to bring parents together within our building for such things as the teacher appreciation meal she helped carry out in May of last year, as well as providing enriching experiences beyond the classroom for students, as well as, as with her recent after-school holiday ornament activity. I know that I can reach out to her anytime and will receive her full support as I look for ways to strengthen home-school communication and forge relationships with students and parents. Ms. Dodson is a parent liaison and was nominated by a staff member. And next up, we have the Apple Award. The Apple Award is given to a teacher who achieves something which significantly contributes to their school and community, uses creative or innovative instructional techniques, or goes above and beyond for the student. We have three recipients for the Apple Award this evening. First off, Heather Campbell from Orchard View Elementary School. Ms. Campbell is the reading specialist at Orchard View Elementary School. She has inspired so many readers and writers at Orchard View. Ms. Campbell just led the most amazing reading challenge that encouraged so much reading. Students love when she comes to share a book and read to the class. I'm so thankful to have Ms. Campbell at our school. Ms. Campbell was nominated by a staff member. Next up, Carrie Takarch from Robert E. Ailer Middle School. Ms. Takarch is a science teacher at Robert E. Ailer Middle School. Ms. Takarch brings so much enthusiasm to teaching sixth-grade science. She truly tries to make learning fun and memorable. She is also extremely caring towards her students and works to know them as individuals. She seems genuinely to want to help shape them to be good people as well as learners of science. Ms. Takarch was nominated by a parent. And next up, we have Caitlin Walkup from Gainesboro Elementary School. Mrs. Walkup is a second-grade teacher at Gainesboro Elementary School. Mrs. Walkup is continuously going above and beyond with her students and even takes time to write them personal notes and send them postcards. She's also amazing when it comes to communicating with parents, whether it be for preparations for an event or a special day coming up, changes in the schedule, or to let them know if there were any issues with their child. Her level of discipline and communication with her students is fantastic, and our son absolutely loves being in her class. Ms. Walkup is also very welcoming to parents and kids during special events, and she goes above and beyond to help the children learn and retain information. She is a wonderful teacher. Ms. Walkup was nominated by a parent. Congratulations.
All right, the last recognition that we have is we had Clerk of the Board Appreciation Week, and Nina has definitely hit the ground running since starting here in January as the official clerk. And she said, and she did this knowing that she had very, very large shoes to fill. It's hard to believe that she's only been doing this for less than two months, and she handles every situation professionally and with poise. I know that the work she does is definitely not easy, taking care of all of us, right, guys? And we thank her for all that she does. Her commitment is unparalleled, and I know I speak for more than just myself. Thank you for all that you do. I know the board did give you some gifts, as well as our cabinet and myself, and I would like to call you down there to take a picture with our chair and myself. Thank you, Mrs. Nina.
Thank you, Dr. Hummer. And for myself, I just want to tell you, Nina, how fantastic you've been to help me and everybody else here, not taking away from nothing that anybody else does because these people are hard-working folks, but you come in early, you stay late, you help me with phone issues, computer issues, you do it all, so thank you so much for everything that you do. All right, we've come to the point, if those of you who have come would like to leave, we will give you a moment to do so.
Am I allowed to go shake hands with a teacher?
That would be cool. The Frederick County School Board is pleased to receive public comments at each monthly meeting. In order to allow the board sufficient time for its other business, a total time allowed for public comment will generally be limited to 20 minutes. Individuals speaking to the board will be allotted three minutes. Those individuals representing groups or organizations will be allotted five minutes with one representative per group. Upon recognition by the chair, the speaker should clearly state their name, residing district, and the subject of their comments. All comments are to be addressed to the chair. The board will receive comments but will not respond to questions or engage in a dialogue. This is an opportunity to be heard, and the board will refer any issues or concerns to staff or appropriate committees. The school board is committed to showing appropriate respect and courtesy to all citizens, and speakers are expected to show appropriate respect and courtesy to the board. Members of the audience are not permitted to interrupt the speaker or meeting by asking questions or making comments. The school board meetings are taped, recorded, for the purpose of clarification and development of the official minutes. And this evening, we have two people who have signed up. Mr. Nury, you are first.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Brian Nury. I reside in the Opeckin District. I rise to the matter of the Community Eligibility Program, or the CEP, as listed in the budget for tonight. How many of us have ever gotten to 2:00, 3:00 o'clock in the afternoon and just gotten those hangar pains? You know, you're just not yourself when you don't have the Snickers, right? Now imagine 20 or 30 of those in a room together, and that's what some teachers are dealing with, are kids that are not fully aware or fully engaged in class simply over something as small as lunch. So, we have to consider the fact that, yes, while we're trying to wrestle with that $2.2 million, we're also got to recognize that these align with quite a few of the goals that we have set for this year. that we have set for this year, including test scores, disciplinary issues, and attendance. According to a 2020 Maxwell Center for Policy Research study done by Syracuse University, universal free meals, that would of course be 100% across the board, but still, they improved test scores, decreased the stigma over participation in free lunch programs, reduction in food insecurity and food waste, reduced administrative burden, and an improved readiness to learn. And in the end, that's what we're here to provide for the students, is a readiness to learn. In a 2017 Brookings Institute report, access to healthy lunches resulted in a four percentile point improvement in test scores, and among students with, who qualify for free or reduced lunches, that turned into a 40% improvement over their previous results. And Minnesota Public Schools right now is going through that statewide, providing meals for all their students, and they're seeing an improvement not only in the participation, but also in the quality of their food as well. A 2020 UNC Chapel Hill study saw that CEP participation eliminated the social stigma of students participating in free lunches. To quote, "We have good research to suggest that students associate school meals with poverty, and we've got good research to suggest that stigma associated with poverty carries with students throughout the day." So overall, expanding the CEP program will fulfill the goals of this county, to improve test scores, reduce disciplinary issues, and fixing attendance rates. This is not some sort of indoctrination for the students, it's simply making them ready to learn. As we've already heard, we've, from Bright Futures, is a need in this community, not just an extra little thing that we do for the students. And so when we ask, when does this all end? When do we finally get to see anything? We'll see that on graduation day with our improved scores and our improved graduation rates. So please reconsider your positions on the CEP program. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nury. Next, if I mess this up, I am so sorry. Is it? Marfia Gud?
Marfati Agud.
Okay, I'm sorry.
No worries. Hi, good evening. My name is Sonia Marfati Agud, and I live in the Back Creek District. And I'm here for a few reasons. I attended the Joint School Board and Board of Supervisors Work Session, and first, I want to thank Chairman Sturtevent, Mr. Atkins, Mr. Bell, Mrs. White, and Ms. Martin for voicing your support for our teachers and support staff, and the need for them to be compensated accordingly. We have a lot of needs in our division, and this has been an issue for far too long, losing our teachers to other districts, including Loudoun County. I appreciate those that spoke up in favor of including Loudoun in our comparison numbers, as neglecting our competition does not give the whole picture, and the issue will never be resolved if we don't take all factors into consideration. Based on that meeting, I am cautiously optimistic that both boards will work together for the betterment of our community and our children. I am concerned that there are even a need to discuss, or having a discussion on providing free breakfast and lunch for all students. As I'm sure you know, a family has to meet the income guidelines to qualify for free breakfast and lunch. They have to fill the paperwork out to ensure that their child receives a free breakfast and lunch. But what if they don't meet that income guidelines, and they are living paycheck to paycheck and still struggling to feed their family? They're poor, but not poor enough. Would you be okay letting that child starve? Mr. Atkins mentioned Bright Futures helped to, helped provide meal bags for the weekends, and that's only, sorry, Mr. Atkins mentioned Bright Futures helping, but Bright Futures does not help provide breakfast and lunch during the week. They only help provide meal bags for the weekends, and that's only if the parents fill out the paperwork. So if a parent does not fill the paperwork out, should the child suffer? Mr. Atkins also mentioned churches. Again, if the parent doesn't reach out to ask for help, should the child suffer? I want to live in a community where we all take care of each other, and feeding a hungry child should be a no-brainer. And since we have to pay taxes, I want to make sure they go towards improving our community, and that means feeding children so that they are able to focus on getting a good education. As future leaders, we want them to be examples of excellence, and learning without hunger seems like a great start. I'm also here because my daughter is a member of Beta Club, which is the first national honor society organization for elementary school in this district. And Frederick County Public Schools focuses greatly on those that need academic help, but misses the opportunity to challenge those with great scholastic potential. I was surprised to see that there aren't a lot of academic or STEM-related extracurricular activities in elementary school, and no way to celebrate and hold kids accountable for getting and maintaining good grades. I'm so thankful for Mr. Kingdom for introducing Beta Club to their school, and for the administrators for making this happen. This organization has provided leadership skills, offers community service-oriented tasks, and allows an opportunity for the kids to thrive in their environment with their peers. My wish is that Beta Club could be in all of the elementary and middle schools within Frederick County Public Schools. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. That is all of the folks who have signed up. Is there anyone who didn't sign up who would like an opportunity to speak? Yes, ma'am.
My name is Kathleen Dobbs from Back Creek. I didn't think I was going to make it here today, so I didn't have anything written up, but I am here to talk about racism in the district, specifically in James Wood. I have talked to the principal over there, and I've talked to Dr. Hummer, the NAACP, other parents, other students, and it is, kids are going home depressed all the time because they're being called the N-word repeatedly in the hallways, even by people they don't know. They're using apps that have a whip sound while they're walking behind African-American kids. Asian kids are being told to go back to their factories. Mexican kids are being told to go back across the border. And it's not, it happens a couple of times a week to a few students. It's, it happens every single day to a large majority of the students. I have been dealing with Ms. Woolover for a while. She has been amazing. She, I can tell she really genuinely wants to make this change, as Mr. Hummer's, or Dr. Hummer's well. But I don't know if it's, they don't have the support, enough support from you guys, or if it's just enough people aren't on the same page or the right page. But I know my son has four friends who are suicidal because of the racism at James Wood. And he has two friends who he has essentially lost because they had to leave the school, they transferred to a different school in the district because it was that bad, and they are becoming suicidal. I have been fighting this since last year. He started in sixth grade there, and it started immediately. He has been pushed into bathroom stalls and told to stay in your cage, monkey. He has been assaulted at school by having his head slammed on the table. He, and he's not the only one. It's not, if it was just my kid, I would maybe try to handle this on a smaller scale. But the more I dug, there's now a Facebook page called Stop Racism in Frederick County Schools, and bullying, because that's a huge thing also. And overnight, it earned, it gathered, I think it was 179 parents that all agree that this is over-the-top bad, not normal bad crisis at this point, or you're going to start having kids, having to tell these kids why someone isn't coming to school anymore because they killed themselves. And I know my son has been close to feeling that way, and, and I even have some of my son's friends come up to me when they come over to the house, and, "Mrs. Dobbs, can I talk to you about school?" One specifically was, "Can you ask them to protect us in the locker rooms?" He said that somebody got in a fight with him in the locker room. He went to the teacher that was in there, and he said, "It didn't look like a real fight, so you can't, you can't make a complaint about it." And since the teacher said that, he assumed that was the rule, so he never reported it. My time is up. Thank you. I hope you take this very seriously. It's, I mean, it's literally in my kid's life, it's in your hands.
May I say something? This is something that, that I'm very concerned about, and I've talked to Dr. Hummer about this issue several times. And it's not just racism, it's disciplinary action. There has to be an effort for everyone from the head all the way down to have rules for children, and they are children still. And they must be disciplined, and we have to figure out ways to do it. And we will address this issue.
Thank you. Yeah, I had talked to Ms. Woolover, and I was like, you know, even just a simple, the first time it happens, you know, oops, maybe you made a mistake, give you a chance to grow. If second time, you know, you're in school suspension for a day. And just, and you can't, there can't be leniency on those, on those disciplinary actions. It has to, and I also feel like the teachers need to be taught how to deal with this, because they're brushing it under the, under the rug a lot. And my son won't even go to certain teachers anymore because he knows they don't do anything. So they may also need like a disciplinary action if it's found out that a student came to them and they didn't do anything about it.
Thank you for coming forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak?
Hello, my name is Jonathan Woolhite, and I came here to stand in solidarity with both the previous speaker and those who have come to say that we need food programs here in our schools. I believe most of you went to school to become educators. And there is a book that goes, that is part of the curriculum in many universities, if you have heard of it, Free Air's Pedagogy of the Oppressed. It details his experience educating people in the global South, in Africa, in South America, and Southeast Asia. And it speaks of how both the teachers and the students come into a learning environment to learn and to grow and to better society together. But there is a fourth chapter in that book that is very rarely gone over, that details The issue of students being fed and the racism that they are suffering in these schools doesn't just affect these kids. They affect you, they have affected you. And we need to do better, both as teachers, members of the community, and parents, to make sure that we guide our children, and make sure they are cared for, to create a better society. That is all.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Next up is reports by superintendent.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have two items that I would like to report on. The first is, I think it looks like just Charlie Royce here, so you can hear my message. How's it going? I want to thank again our board for honoring our SROs and for all of the work that they do, as well as for you approving that proclamation. Words cannot express how grateful we are for all of the hard work and dedication they have for our students, for our staff, and for our community. We have such an amazing relationship with all of them, and they bring comfort to a lot of our minds, especially with working hard to keep everyone safe. It's a lot of work. I know that we, I know that we can go to them for anything, and we appreciate Sheriff Milholland for letting us continue with this program, and thanks again for all that you do. Next up is, I want to take a moment to thank each of you. So it is School Board Appreciation Month, and I want to take this time to acknowledge all of the hard work that you do. Your hard work and dedication to our students, staff, and community does not go unnoticed and is greatly appreciated. I know each of you have acknowledged the hard work that goes into being a school board member, but always know that we're here to support you so that we can do what is best for all students together. We did get you some little gifts to show our appreciation, so we had some kindergarten students make a picture. I see Mrs. White has hers down there. If you mind holding that up so everybody can see that. So proud of our students for making a little appreciation there. So that was handmade, by the way, so that's probably worth a lot of money. So make sure you hold on to that, okay?
Definitely handmade.
Literally, right? And, and we just, that's just a small token of our appreciation of all of your hard work. So thank you for all that you do, and we all greatly appreciate you. So that's it, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
So next on our agenda is unfinished business. I will turn that back over to Dr. Hummer.
Thank you, sir. All right, just give me a second here. I think they make it slow-mo on purpose, just so I can sit here and look at you guys.
We have to dial down a little bit. They're looking at you.
Right, right. Thank you, Mr. Funes. Well, thank you very much, Mr. Chair, School Board, community, for this opportunity for my last presentation to you all of my proposed needs-based budget. I also want to again thank you all for all of your hard work. We've had many finance committee meetings, we had two budget work sessions, with the last one last Tuesday, to work through some of the items that you would like to see changed and adjusted. So in order to start that conversation this evening, I'm going to go through the budget as originally presented to you. I'm then going to go through the items that we agreed to add on at the last meeting, not in agreement in regards to the items you all are approving, but to open more conversation. Because at the end of this discussion, I am recommending that the full board adopt the proposed FY '25 budget to be sent downtown for consideration. So as I mentioned, I want to go through these items one more time, semi-quickly, but please stop me if you have any immediate questions. Here is a quick summary of all of the percentage increases for all of our staff across the board. So we have a 6.6 increase for our teachers and classified staff, 5% for other professionals, and then 3.2% for administrators, supervisors, and coordinators. That 3.2% is where we started with the COLA, which is the Cost of Living Adjustment, which was taken directly from the Social Security Administration, so that's not a number that we had made up. So in regards to the teacher salaries, that how we got to the 6.6 was a couple layers. First, we started with that COLA. Then, as we've mentioned to you all, we're trying to uncluster the scale so that we can become more competitive. As I've mentioned to you all, that is going to be a phased-in approach, so this was the first step to that phase. In order to fix that in its entirety, it would have been a large number for us to take into consideration, so we want to phase that in. We also have the increase to the start time of $52,000 for our teachers, so that's where we got, for our new teachers, that's where we came up with the 6.6 average for our teachers. Next up is our classified staff, and those are our bus drivers, our instructional aides, our custodians, our nutritional workers. Again, we started with a 3.2, and then we wanted to make sure that we stayed competitive, because as we've mentioned to you all, not only are we competing with other school divisions with our classified staff, but we're also competing against retail and other businesses right here in Frederick County and our neighboring divisions. So we wanted to increase that to a 6.6, so we added on that additional salary to get to the 6.6 increase across the board for those staff. Then we have the other professionals, which is the diagnostician, psychologist, and therapist. We started with the 3.2, and then we did an additional adjustment for the 1.8 to do a 5% average increase for those staff. And then, of course, last but definitely not least, for our administrators, we stuck with the 3.2% for our administrators, as that increased dollar amount is shown on your We also wanted to continue with other incentives for our staff, one of them being a 25-year experience incentive that will be built into their salary. We would like to get to the 15-year, but we wanted to start somewhere, as I've mentioned to you all. So we're starting with the 25-year experience, which is for that total right there of the $1.4 million. We also recognize some hard-to-fill positions, and as you can see, special education is at the top of the list, but we have identified other positions that are hard to fill, so we're starting with a $2,000 sign-on bonus for those positions so that we can do a better job of finding those teachers and filling those positions, and other staff as well, as you can see on that list. We also had many conversations with our principals, as we've mentioned to you, and finding substitutes is becoming very, very difficult. So one of the things that we wanted to do was to increase that rate for our substitutes to hopefully attract those subs. That's in addition to all the other things that we are doing with the, adding on the position at each building, so that we can see how that goes in regards to having a licensed position, as also looking at the Premium Fridays to hopefully attracting more substitutes to work on those days. work on those days. So this is in addition to each of those items. We also wanted to take a look at some other initiatives. We wanted to take a look at increasing the attendance bonus for our bus drivers because we did find that there was a bus driver shortage and still is, so we want to make sure that we are addressing that, and we want to keep those bus drivers, so we increased that initiative as well. There is also a 1% bonus that is built into the governor's initially proposed budget, and I say that initially because if you've been paying attention to the General Assembly and we've been sharing that information with you all, there's been a lot of conversations of potentially increasing the amount of money to public education. So we might have to come back around and reconsider this item here, but it's okay for you to approve this and move forward because we can have that conversation after it gets approved at the state level. This is where it initially is right now of that 1% bonus in the first year of the biennium from the governor. So we'll have more conversations as that continues to develop, which is not out of the normal because the, the budget that is approved at the state level typically gets approved in April or May, which we hope, so there's always conversations that happen after the fact. Next up is, as we continue to again be good stewards of our dollar and also providing the staff that our buildings need, is we wanted to provide an objective view of how we were staffing our buildings and getting staff in front of our students and supporting the staff that's in our buildings. So we met with each of our principals, we developed the staffing standards in regards to where we're at in regards to a state standard versus the local standard, and we determined we needed the staff members all the way to the left. However, we did determine that based on those staffing standards, we were able to move some positions around so that we were not requesting the full 42 positions from the Board of Supervisors, but we were only requesting the 25. Again, being good stewards of our positions and good stewards of our dollar. We also have the adding of the night school, back to Dal J. This is again a step in the right direction for us to catch those students that are not graduating. We want to get from that 66 students that aren't graduating down to zero, so this is one of the initiatives that we wanted to continue to move forward with, to provide additional pathways for students. We also had a conversation about safety and security. Thank you to Mr. Conlin and all the hard work he's doing in identifying those areas of need across our division. I know that is an item that you asked us to take a look at adding additional dollars, which we'll talk about here in a second. Here was another item that you asked us to take a look at adding another bus, so we currently have six buses in that rotating operating budget every year. We wanted to add two initially, but again, with your proposal, we are going to be adding three as a recommendation for consideration. Next up, we know there has been a lot of questions about the CEP, and I wanted to go ahead and provide another quick summary of an overview of this, so to make sure that you all are fully informed in regards to what direction you're going on with this program. We currently have nine schools that participate in the CEP program, and all that means is that for students that are in need and are in the school, they have access to free lunch. That doesn't mean that all 100% of those students in those schools actually participate in that because they might have means to actually provide lunch for, for their students or bring lunch in. That number then changed from 40% to 25% in regards to qualifying, so now as a school division, we do qualify for all of our schools to participate in this program. However, in order to fund the nutrition fund balance, we would have to add an additional $2.3 million, excuse me, $2.2 million as an estimated cost. That again is not to fund serving all 14,000 students with lunches and breakfasts, that is to service the students that are more than likely going to participate in this program, which we're averaging about 60%. Now, could it be less than that? Could it be more? Potentially. But again, as we've mentioned to you all, the serving of breakfast and serving of lunch for our students goes a very long way to make sure that our students have access to their education, and there's a lot of studies to show that if we have students that are not being fed properly, that that can impact many different variables for the student to learn, for the student to have appropriate behaviors, and many different variables. So this was a way for us to, again, to, to service those students that we potentially are missing and being able to serve them with, with meals. Not all 14,000, but only the students that would be participating.
Uh, Dr. Hummer?
Yes, sir.
So just a question about this, this has just been one of the biggest topics that we've had.
Yes, sir.
And debating about it amongst board members. You said that we're anticipating with $2.2 million that around 60% of the students would take advantage of this.
Roughly, yes, sir.
But there's nothing to stop it from, from being all 14,000, because as a tax-paying parent, you could say, hey, I'm going ahead and, and paying my taxes already for this, why would I pay double for lunch?
So we-
Could that, could that be something that we're looking at? I mean, it's so 2.2 is an approximation of 60% of the students taking advantage of this, but it could be 40%. It could be 100%. I mean, we just don't know.
Well, looking at historical data, great question, Mr. Atkins, and looking at historical data, we currently have CEP in nine of our schools, and none of those schools are at that 100%. So we are, and then historical data, looking back in COVID, when we were feeding all of our students and they had access to free breakfast and lunch, again, not all the students were participating in that as well. So that is just an estimate. The odds of it getting to 100% of all 14,000 is probably slim, however, as you said, potentially it could happen, but I think it's very, very slim for that to happen, but it is something for you all to take into consideration. Because right now, at each of our schools, that average is about 60% across the board. But I told, that's a great question, and it's something we would have to take into consideration.
And currently, we're not turning any students away for meals, and we wouldn't do that.
Correct, for the, correct, for the students, and I know we've, we talked about this for the students that we know about, correct? Yes, sir.
And that would be breakfast and lunch, not just lunch or, or breakfast? Not just one meal?
Absolutely. Yes, sir.
For both?
Yes.
So just to confirm, Dr. Hummer, sorry, Ms. Atkins, if I may. Any student that goes through the line for breakfast or lunch, not a single one is turned away?
Correct.
And that's why we carry the $150,000 of school meal debt?
Correct.
Okay. So no student in Frederick County Public Schools has ever turned away for a meal, or goes hungry if they're hungry and they go through the lunch line?
If they go through the, right, if they go through the lunch line, absolutely not. Now, if there's a student we don't know about, or if there's food that comes in that's not nutrit, whatever the reason is, but if they come through the line, we are not turning them away, or if we know that a student's not eating, we make sure that they go and get a breakfast or a lunch. Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Dr. Hummer? Excuse me. Could, could you name the nine schools?
Do, I don't have them off the top of my head, Mrs. Martin. I've shared those with you in the past in previous presentations. Do you have those, Mrs. Curry?
Right.
Yeah, you want to come on up? I love the pop quiz, Mrs. Martin, that was great.
Quick on her feet.
So we have Dal J, we have NREP, we have James Wood Middle School is our only middle school, we have Apple Pie Ridge, Indian Hollow, Middletown. I usually look at this alphabetically, so let's see. Settlenwell, Indian Hollow, Middletown, Evendale. I think I'm missing one.
Is it Orchard View?
No, Orchard View, Red Bud Run. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Curry.
Mr. Chairman? If I may-
Okay. A question for you, Dr. Hummer?
Yes, sir.
It's $185,000, isn't it, or is it $150,000? Which one?
For the debt?
Yes.
150.
150. Okay. So in that 150, that, that number doesn't include every student who could possibly be going hungry. There could be other students that aren't going through the line. I know we don't have the percentages of that, but I just want to clarify that this doesn't necessarily encompass every single student that could possibly want or need a free lunch.
That's what I was insinuating earlier, that is correct.
And further to that point, the poverty line is set at whatever it's set at, and for those schools that currently have it, the free and reduced lunch, I'm sorry, the schools that don't have all free and reduced lunch, they're at that poverty line, they have to meet that certain amount, correct? There's a certain amount of-
You talking about the free and reduced?
I'm talking about the schools, the, the, the other eight schools that don't-
They meet that 25%, correct?
Yeah.
There's one school that does not, but they could, we can actually categorize them with another school to participate. They miss it by one or two percentage points, but all of the other schools meet that percentage, and we meet it as a county, yes.
So-
Because we're at 37% as a county.
Right. So I, I think maybe I'm not, maybe I'm not explaining myself clearly enough. So let's say Shorando and Iller, both of those schools currently don't have a, a complete free and reduced lunch, correct? In other words, all of this-
Sorry, I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Bell.
You have some schools that get, everybody gets a free lunch, those, those nine schools you're talking about, correct?
They have, they could potentially have access, but we're, none of those schools are at 100%.
Right.
Right.
Right, but they have access to it.
Correct.
And the other schools don't have access.
Correct, yes.
They have to meet a certain dollar amount in their income to qualify for-
It's the percentage.
Yeah.
So we used to be four, it used to be 40%.
I see.
And now it's 25, and that's that ISP number.
Okay.
Yes.
So, all right, thank you, that, that explains it.
Yes.
That's it.
Okay.
I just needed to understand it.
Thank you, Mr. Bell. Yeah, great question. Thank you. Any other questions with the CEP?
Just to clarify, Virginia Code specifically states that a student will be provided a meal whether that student can pay for it or not, correct?
I'm not familiar with that code, Mr.-
22.1-79.7 subsection 1, school meals availability to students.
We have to make them available, yes.
We have to make them available, yes. Sorry, I don't have the code in front of me.
By the code, we are not turning any child away regardless of the ability to pay, correct?
Sure, sure.
That's all I want.
Yeah.
Dr. Hummer?
Thank you, sir. Yeah.
Um, Mr. Chair. So as far as the lunch given, to a student who would come up, somebody going through hard times, student forgets their lunch money, it happens all the time, I used to do it all the time. Are they given the same standard meal that is available, or they, it's not, it's not prison, it's not bread and water?
No, no, no.
Okay. Just making sure.
We don't want to single students out, especially to say, you get this meal, oh, you don't have your money, you get this meal. Absolutely not. That is the last thing we want to do, is single a student out, so we do not do that.
Right. I mean, I'd hate for some kid to get bullied because they, they are only getting a cheese sandwich and a carton of milk.
No, 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 no. The, the only difference would be i-if, but again, you would have to do your homework as another student if they don't, weren't buying à la carte items.
Right, right.
You know, like other bags and such, but for a standard lunch, no. No, they wouldn't have access to that.
And as far as a student experience going through the lunch line, there's one student in front that doesn't have any money to pay for it. There's one student right behind them that does. So when they, when that first student who doesn't have the money to pay goes through the line, whoever at the point of sale is manning that cash register does not treat that student any differently than the one behind.
They should not be, Mrs. Klein, absolutely not.
So there's no stigma then in the lunch line?
There should not be, no.
Okay. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Mr. Chair?
Sir?
One last plea.
Yes.
I don't think the, I think we can all agree that, everyone here can agree that if a child goes through the lunch line, they will be provided a lunch regardless of whether they can pay for it or not. I think the, the, what we're arguing, or what, what we're differing on, or at least I'm differing on with my colleagues, is that we're not capturing all of those students who potentially are going hungry. And I think that it's going to, for, for those students who don't go through the lunch line but still need a lunch, they may be bringing something from home, but it may not be healthy. Maybe something that they picked up at Dollar Tree or Dollar General or wherever it is that they go shopping, I, I don't know. But my point is that, you know, to me, this is less about money than it, than it is about doing the right thing. I think that we have a responsibility to those who rely on our services, for their well-being, putting food on their table, so to speak. Sorry, I prepared something, and I'm trying to be clever about it. I think the best thing that we can do tonight is the right thing, and the worst is for us to do absolutely nothing. Those students who walk through without money are given a free lunch, but they do not equal the total number of students who do not have a lunch or a healthy option for that day. So again, doing the right thing is what should underpin all of our actions. You know, I can't emphasize this enough. I know we disagree, but again, I don't want us to be like Fairfax County and Loudoun County. Loudoun County also has free and reduced lunches in it, but I, I want us to be the community that I first moved to, I don't know, 12 years ago, where you walk down the street and you know people, and people know who you are, and that we take care of each other. So I'm just, I'm, I guess this is a plea to the rest of my colleagues to rethink their position on this and to think about approving the $2.2 million for the new school nutrition program. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I may? I guess the, the question then is, the way we're operating now, we're feeding students out of debt services for, you know, last year I think it was $128,000. We're anticipating 100, approximately $150,000 this year. How does, how would this work versus CEP to ensure the unknown number, because we have no empirical data of how many students are not eating, but they all do have the opportunity? Since we don't have that data, how would we ensure CEP versus what we're doing now that all students are eating? Are we going to walk up to every student with a sack lunch and say, here's your food, eat it whether you like it or not? Or are we, are they going to have to go through the, the lunch line just like everybody else if we approve CEP versus now? Are, is CEP going to guarantee that all students are going to walk to that line and not be hungry that afternoon? Maybe they didn't want to eat, maybe they didn't like what was on the menu, I don't know. Or, I mean, so that's kind of, what's the value here? What's, what's the value of CEP versus the standard model where it's 150,000 versus 2.2, where we don't have the empirical data to show that how many students are not eating versus how we're going to ensure CEP will feed every student? I, I haven't seen that number, and I haven't heard that explanation.
So, so thank you, Mr. Atkins, that's a great question. I, I would argue that we, we have shared that data. In the last presentation, we showed where the school was prior to CEP, to where the school was after CEP. Now, what that's going to look like at all the other schools, we looked at historical data for when food was free for all students back during COVID, and even during that, that time, not all of the students were accessing breakfast and lunch. Now, there is going to be a hypothetical because we're basing it on historical data, which is a lot of what we do in regards to determining what our projections are going to look like, determining what our budget's going to look like. Everything that we're talking about is based on projections.
I, I, I understand that.
Yes, sir.
How, how, and I understand how many students we fed, I, I get that.
Yes, sir.
That's not my question.
Oh, I'm sorry, I apologize.
My question is how many students were hungry? Was it one? Was it 10? Was it 200? I, I need to know that number.
Gotcha. I don't know if we have that number, I don't know how we would get that number.
I don't either.
Um, I, yeah, so we're, again, we're basing it off the historical data of when we were feeding students free lunches to versus when we weren't, and there is a percentage difference there, especially when you take a look at when those students had access to a breakfast and a lunch and when they didn't. So that's what we're basing it on.
Well, I, I agree with my other board members and, and you that there are kids that go hungry.
Yes, sir.
Um, but we have the opportunity, the same opportunity as a two, we have a $2.2 million opportunity, $150,000 opportunity to feed these kids, that, and they will all be able to go through that same lunch line. They will all be given a standard, traditional meal. But how are we going to ensure that CEP will make sure nobody else goes hungry?
Now, that question I can answer, yes, sir.
Okay.
So, yeah, so we, we will advertise this, and there's a lot of advertisement that goes out to our families. Our principals, and I think I still have some in our rooms back here, do a fantastic job of knowing their students and knowing the students that are in need, their counselors know the students, so we would make sure that we would get this information out. So regardless of where we land tonight, next year, we'll potentially still have at least nine schools, hopefully, so then we'll have to get that information out to those families to make sure that they are aware that there is lunches available and breakfast to those students. And then we would work with those individual families.
And we would, so say CEP doesn't pass tonight, would we still be advertising to all of our parents, our students that your kid's not going to go hungry, we got him.
Absolutely.
We got him right underneath the wing.
Yes.
You know?
Same, same process, it's just a different modality. Where before it was CEP, now it's going to be free and reduced, it's going to be if you're in need, we'll make sure that you get a lunch, so it's just communication with those families to make sure they have that information.
And we're not, we're, the nine, excuse me, the nine schools that are currently CEP will remain CEP if this does not get approved?
No.
If you, if you all approve as is, yes, sir.
Okay.
Just the nine. That's where it's the 1 million, so nine, and we'll get to that in a sec. Can I?
Yeah, sorry.
Any more questions about the CEP? No, 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 these are great questions. Let me keep going on and it'll answer that question. Any other questions with, I'm sure there will be, but anything else right now with this? Can I move, keep moving forward, is that okay? Okay. So here is my original proposal, budget proposal to you, to include that 7.9 ask from the locality. We have a breakdown from state, federal fees and other charges. The reason you see a negative there from federal, again, that's because S or dollars are going away, those are COVID dollars we received, and there's a little bit of money less there in regards to fees and other charges, which always fluctuates. Here is the additional money for debt service, there is an increase of 2.35 million from FY24 to FY25 that we have to prepare for, and again, that's for James Wood High School and Indian Hollow Elementary for funding those two projects. We also have our cap projects, we have the years listed over there to the right, and as you can see, there are projects that have been on here for quite a few years. Thank you to our Board of Supervisors and to you all for allowing us to chisel away at some of these projects, but as you can see, that dollar amount is still at 19 million. We do have some work to do and making sure we take care of our current assets. So back to your question, Mr. Atkins, we broke this down into essentially four different options for you to take into consideration. So let's break these down for you. For option A, that is to add the additional safety and security dollars, which you all had requested of 100,000, adding the transportation of 130,000 and then moving forward with the 1.2 million. And that is to continue to move as is. The adjustment B is to work through a phase in, and that's the, again, 100,000, 130,000, and then the additional 300,000 to move forward with just the five schools that we mentioned last time. It was five, correct?
Yes.
Five schools, just want to make sure I get that number correctly. So here's where it breaks it down a little bit more. So we have my original proposed budget, we have option A, which is to continue as is, we have option B, which is to continue as a phase in, and then we also wanted to mention an option four, which would be my originally proposed budget plus the additional items that you had recommended. Didn't know if that was going to be an option for you to take into consideration, but just to put that option on the table.
Where's that option?
That's, so that is option column A in addition to the 230,000 dollars.
Got you, got you.
Right. We didn't think you would be going in that direction, but just in case you do, we wanted to make sure we made that mention. And it's actually listed in your motions in front of you as well, under board docs. Here is just an additional document that I wanted to share with you all, and this will become more solidified once you all vote this evening, but this essentially is a rendition of what we send downtown, it's a breakdown of our budget. And as I've mentioned to you all in our budget work sessions and our committees, that we have a multiple different funds that we access and we have to fund in regards to our school division, and this is what that breakdown is going to look like when we send it across the street. So I wanted you to take a look at this. As you can see at the fine print at the bottom there, this chart reflects once this proposed budget is approved. So this could change based on what you all approve this evening. And we are going to continue to break down each of these funds in future finance committee meetings. But of course, if there's any questions, more than happy to answer them. So lastly is just a little breakdown of some upcoming dates. We have the meeting today, which you will all be approving, the budget, hopefully the needs-based budget that I'm presenting to you all today. Then I'm going to be meeting with the Board of Supervisors tomorrow to present your budget as you approved, so I encourage you to attend that meeting if you're available. Then where we stand right now, April 10th is when the Board of Supervisors will be approving the budget for the county. That is tentative and they're still on for, right now, for that particular date. If that stays, we will then have another budget work session on April 11th to talk through what they agreed to and appropriated to make sure that we're still all on the same page with how we want to appropriate those dollars. And then April 16th is when you approve the budget. So tonight's adopting my proposed budget, April 16th is approving it once the Board of Supervisors allocates those dollars. So with that, I open up for you all to have a conversation. As I mentioned to you, I'm recommending that you adopt the proposed FY25 budget and we'll have a discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hummer. Discussion?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to move to approve option A of the superintendent's budget.
Okay, we have a motion to approve option A as presented by the superintendent. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and it's been properly seconded, is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
I would like us to consider at the very least the phase in of the CEP program to encompass those five schools that were mentioned previous, to just give it a start. Like we are phasing in for the teacher salaries, to phase in a CEP program would benefit at least a little more of our students and provide them with the necessary food that they would require to be in our schools and to do better in our schools. So I would encourage us to hold off on making a vote and further discuss the possibility of a phase in.
Okay, any other discussion?
I know this is a time-sensitive process, as we got to get it downtown tomorrow, superintendent is taking that down to the Board of Supervisors for presentation, there's a lot of other people dipping their hands into tax, payer's pocket, police officers, firefighters, transportation, parks wreck, what have you. However, our concern is students, right? You know, it's great to have parks and wreck, but I'm really looking out for students on this. However, it's hard to justify, you know, spending that money on the CEP program when we are feeding all of our students, everybody has the opportunity. And we can do that for $150,000 rather than a 2.2 million dollar approximate price tag because I know that, I shouldn't even say I know, I have a strong feeling that if John Q taxpayer is already paying for his, his or her child to eat at school through their taxes, why send lunch money? Why pay it twice? So more and more people will grab onto it and it will, you know, go from a 2.2 million dollar price tag up to a 4 million dollar price tag or even higher. This is something that would be up for a vote or baked into the budget every year. It's, it's really hard to justify that when we can take care of this and be good stewards of our dollar at the $150,000. For that, I'm, I would definitely back the option A proposal. To Mr. Bell's point, what he said is true that there are students going hungry on the weekends. And with, to Ms. Good's point, you know, Bright Futures does provide that stuff on the weekends for those students if they sign up. You know, I know that we're, anytime you go to Martin's and you're shopping, you know, they ask you to round up for that school fund, they, you know, Bright Futures takes that and they add it to their operating dollars. So not, not a plug for Martin's, but you know, go, go shop there and help out the students. But I think part of it is getting the word out that we're not turning students away. We would never turn students away. One, just cruel. Second, it's, it's the law, we can't do that. You're not getting a cheese sandwich or a peanut butter sandwich or something that's, that, that would, that you couldn't eat if you had an allergy deficiency or something. We would give you a healthy meal. It's the same standard meal that everybody else would get. So for that, I, I don't, we haven't captured the data of how many students are going hungry, we're assuming. I'm sure that there are, but they have, they will have the same opportunity with CEP as they will with the debt services. To Ms. Klein's point, no student's getting ostracized over this because it's, it's the same process going through the line. And, you know, one of the ladies came up today and spoke about bullying and racism in the schools and I'd hope that, you know, we want to be attacking other students based upon their parents' financial situation. Does it happen? Yes, it does, and it's a shame it does. I remember, you know, growing up, it was kind of the same way for me. To Ms. White's point, she brought up something from her childhood and how her family grew up. We were the same way, I came from a divorced family. Dad barely made enough to, to cover the bills and, you know, send us to school. I used to mow yards and ride my bike uptown to get donuts for my sister for breakfast. You know, we, we make do with what we got. There's already federal programs in there, SNAP and other things that helps provide those families with a meal so they can send their child to school with a lunch. So there's, you know, safety net one, safety net two would be the debt services that we provide here. I don't think we need to go to the taxpayer and ask them for 2.2 million dollars or an additional 1.2 million dollars to supplement this. There's, I don't see where it's broken to have to fix this. You know, students have the opportunities to eat, they have the opportunities to learn, to Mr. Murray's point back there. He's, how, how would it feel to be hungry and in class and try and learn? It's tough. It is tough. You know, we are providing that, that breakfast for that student, though. They have the opportunity to get that, they have the opportunity to go get lunch. I would encourage everybody, jump in the line, get you something to eat. I know a lot of times we would trade lunches and stuff, but you shouldn't have to rely on all that, but the opportunity's there, so I can't get behind adding the extra 1.2 million dollars to make it to 2.2, so I'm with Ms. Klein on option A.
Thank you, Mr. Atkins. Any other discussion?
Mr. Chair, if I may.
Sir.
Just so that, just a couple of things. So right now, the assumed overage is going to be 150,000 for the new budget, but let's say we do a better job of advertising this and looking long-term, it may increase that amount by quite a bit. And by not putting something in the budget to accommodate that extra amount, we're going to struggle to find those dollars to pay for that overage. By how much, I don't know. You know, that's something that we don't know, we base it on, you know, historic data. The other thing that I would propose, if the board is, if the board pleases or however I'm supposed to say it, you know, look at this in terms of, instead of five, look at it maybe with three schools or two schools or even one school. You know, by including CEP, making a 10th school, I, I don't, I don't want to drop it, I don't want to lose it. We have nine schools that are benefiting from it. Even if we add one more, that's one more school that gets to benefit from it. And maybe we can do a better job of capturing data on those students who are going hungry and are not getting into the line or for those students who are benefiting from this. So I would, I would suggest that we look at those ideas as well, maybe dropping it from five to four to three to two to one, whatever's palatable to the bud, to the board. Thank you.
Motion has been made and properly seconded. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
It hasn't been seconded, point of order.
It was seconded.
Has it?
Yes.
Oh, did you? I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Ms. White?
No.
Mr. Funas?
Yes.
Mr. Atkins?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
No.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Sturdeman?
Yes.
Okay, motion has passed. Okay, is the unfinished business, anything else on unfinished business, sir?
Yes, Mr. Chair, there was an additional item that we added after closed session and it was for the purchase of land next to Shorando High School. There is a motion on the floor for you to approve the purchase of this property, but I would like for Mr. Goodwin to share some information about this property so that you all can hear it again as well as the public. Thank you, Mr. Goodwin.
Mr. Chair, Madam Vice Chair, board members, Mr. Superintendent, I want to remind you about a piece of property, it's 5.67 acres, it's zoned RA, so it would be possible for a number of uses. This piece of property is right in front of Shorando. The original asking price when listed in March of 2022 was 699,000 dollars, 699,900 dollars. The asking price when it was brought to our attention was 450,000 dollars. We have engaged in, with the board's approval, an exploration of this potential purchase of the property. I'd like to present to you tonight the opportunity to consider the purchase of this piece of property in the amount of 375,000 dollars. The purchase would allow us to have 60 days to conduct any soil sampling or any tests on that piece of property that we're discussing tonight, and it would also require 5,000 dollars down that would be provided in an escrow that would go towards the purchase of the property, and we would need to make sure that we provided the 5,000 dollars in the next 15 days if the board were to talk about this tonight and decide for the purchase. So I'll offer that as information. If you have any additional questions, I'm happy to answer them for you now.
And there, this is money that's already pre-approved, so it doesn't require any...
Yes, Mr. Chair, this is money that has already been approved and would be available at use in the budget that currently exists.
For clarity, which pile of money does it come out of?
Unobligated dollars.
Unobligated dollars, I just want, that would be out there for the record.
Yes.
That way it doesn't say like, it sounds like we've approved this already.
No, 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 no.
And, no, because we haven't.
Correct.
There has not been a vote yet.
Correct. These are under unobligated dollars, yes, sir.
Okay.
Okay, do we have a motion?
I move that the board approve the purchase of real property located off Fairfax Pike in the Opecan Magisterial District identified as tax map number 86-a-117A for 375,000 dollars plus closing costs. I further move the board to authorize the chair to execute all necessary documents that have been approved by council to purchase the property for 375,000 dollars plus closing costs.
Second. Okay, we have a motion to approve the purchase of the property has been properly seconded, any discussion? Ms. White?
Yes.
Mr. Funas?
Yes.
Mr. Atkins?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Sturdeman?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
That is the end of unfinished business, if I am correct?
Yes, sir.
All right, so, I'm sorry. Oh, I am so sorry. Here, let me gavel that for you. We are next in new business, committee reports.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, it looks like I'm up for the finance committee report, and I have a report from the February 5th meeting of the finance committee. A meeting of the finance committee of the Frederick County Public School Board was held on February 5th, 2024. The meeting was called to order at 4:30 PM and a copy of the minutes has been provided to each board member. During the meeting, Mrs. Anderson answered board member questions from the previous finance meeting regarding to the pay gap to Loudoun County Public Schools, the years of service when teachers leave Frederick County Public Schools, additional cost to include principals and vice principals in the 6.6% pay raise initiative, and the cost to be better than Loudoun County at the 15-year mark. She also gave an update on the information about the teacher salary comparison versus the fiscal year 2023, 2024 teacher beginning salary comparison. Ms. Freckley reviewed staffing standards and why they matter. She explained that staffing standards were adopted in 2023 and She explained that staffing standards were adopted in 2023 and how they enhance support for all learners and staff. Dr. Hummer explained that one of the biggest tools of these standards is truly meeting the needs of students and how schools are being staffed. He also mentioned that this will not happen overnight and remained, and remain the topic of future budget conversations as these standards are dependent on funding. He also explained that the General Assembly is currently exploring many new bills addressing the standards of quality, SOQ, and staffing of schools, which is how Frederick County Public Schools receives funding. Once the state meets the SOQ for Frederick County Public Schools, new positions will be required, which in turn will be funded by the locality. Dr. Angelo explained that 25 new full-time equivalent FTE positions are being requested. These FTEs are building level and classroom-based staff. A total of 42 FTE requests has, had been made throughout the division, but after reallocation of staff, the number could be decreased by 17 down to 25 new positions. Of these, out of these 25, seven are compliance positions, not standard of quality positions. Mr. Thompson from the Dow J. Howard Center reviewed the hybrid night program. The requested funding of $46,800 would cover additional pay for principals, assistant principals, lead teachers, and school resource officers to cover night hours as well as instructional materials. He explained that a night program would provide an opportunity for at-risk students to complete their high school experience and reduce the number of students who would otherwise not graduate. He also explained that at-risk students are comprised of students who need a more flexible schedule in order to financially support their family, students with significant mental health concerns, students with specific substance abuse concerns, as well as new mothers. He also shared that high school dropouts are statistically eight times more likely to be incarcerated and earn 33% less than students with a high school diploma. He explained that the current model for this year was funded through the elementary and secondary school emergency relief, ESSR Fund, but that this program was sunsetting. Mrs. Ricketts, a teacher from Dow J. Howard Center, shared her role in implementing a solid foundation of expectations for students who have requested their participation to be virtual. She explained that she holds these Apex Support Meetings every Monday through Thursday from 4:00 PM until 5:00 PM, and again, from 7:00 PM until 8:00 PM. She shared that students are expected to remain on Google Meet for the entire hour, which she helps them comprehend, during, correction, hour during which she helps them comprehend subject material and unlocks their quizzes and tests. She also shared that she is constantly monitoring students' progress in the classes to ensure that they do not fall behind. Mrs. Ricketts was also able to share some of her students' success stories with board members. Mrs. Roglasek, a parent of a Dow J. Howard student, shared that her daughter had been to multiple other schools and school districts before attending Dow J. Howard, only for her behavior to get worse. She explained that she was expecting Mr. Thompson and his team to give up on her, but instead, they were willing to see her daughter and others like her, their potential of a future, meet them on a level that they are at, and guide them out. She also shared that her daughter is now finally passing her classes and doing her homework. Mr. Thompson shared that his vision for the future includes expanding the program that was started on ESSR dollars in order to meet the needs of the students. He clarified that the current request for this hybrid program is 100 students, but there, that there are only 30 spots available. Mrs. Camery defined the terms turnover savings and vacancy savings and explained the difference. She shared that any monetary amount saved from turnover and vacancy savings are spent on unexpected situations, emergency purchases, and safety issues. She also shared what the savings in the current budget year are being requested for. The meeting adjourned at 5:29 PM. Additional details regarding the information covered at the committee meeting are included in the minutes provided to board members. Are there any questions from board members about information shared at this finance committee meeting held on February 5th? Seeing no further questions, Mr. Chair, I move that the, correction, I recommend that the full board approve the minutes from the finance committee meeting held on February 5th, 2024.
Second. Okay. It's been recommended to approve the full minutes of the finance committee, finance committee meeting held on February 5th and has been seconded. Any discussion?
Excuse me, Mr. Chair. There was a recommendation, but it should be in the form of a motion, just to clarify.
Okay, so we need a motion for that, then?
Can we say so moved? So moved.
Does that suffice? All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
We still need a second.
We need a second, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Atkins seconded.
Well, before the motion, we could get another second.
Okay, so we need to...
Do we have another second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next is the instruction committee report.
Mr. Chair, a meeting of the instruction committee of the Frederick County School Board was held on February 8th, 2024. The meeting was called to order at 6:05 PM, and a copy of the meeting minutes have been provided to each board member. During the meeting, Dr. Myers reviewed the Grading Coalition updates. She shared that Dr. Thomas Guske, an expert in the field of grading with over 30 years of international experience and statistician, as a statistician and educator, spent the day with the Grading Coalition teams at all levels. She explained that they discussed research and best practice related to the purposes of grading and reporting, and the advantages and disadvantage of grading scales, as well as reporting on both cognitive and noncognitive factors. Ms. Swager shared the elementary coalition has met since October to begin to develop, to develop understanding around a purpose for grading, to analyze current practices compared to research and best practice, to consider how assessments are used for grading and reporting, and to develop considerations based on learning. Heard Ms. Leinberg, a P.E. teacher at Indian Hollow Elementary School, report that current practices are based on traditional grading and reporting systems, which fails to accurately show the learning taking place in the elementary schools and leads to final grades not always being reflective of the students' achievements. She shared the goal of the coalition is to identify a grading system that clearly shows the correlation between students' grades and student learning. Ms. Henderson, an English teacher and department chair at Milbrook High School, shared the three core understandings, that the purpose of grading is to accurately measure the student's growth towards mastery, and the criteria for grading should be specific to the skill or concept that is being taught and consistent with the learning objectives. And that goal is consistency and clarity in the grading practices at the secondary level. Ms. Megan Schmidt, a science, did I say it right, Schmidt? A science teacher at James Wood Middle School explained that the strategic plan will include developing a collective purpose statement for consistency, reviewing of current grading practices at middle and high school levels, as well as expanding the work to include more parents. She also shared that throughout this process, stakeholders will be included, included and encouraged to provide feedback. Dr. Angelo gave an All in Virginia update by explaining, explaining that All in Virginia, introduced by Governor Yonkin in 2023, is focused on high-intensity tutoring, implementation of the Virginia Literacy Act, and student attendance and chronic absenteeism. He shared that the total funding for Frederick County Public Schools for FY24, FY25, and FY26 is $4,104,163,705. And just to clarify, that is for all of the years total and not $4 million on each year. He also shared that each school created a plan that is tailored to the, tailored to the needs of the student, and that all plans from each school division are posted in the Virginia Department of Education website. Ms. Danielle Store, Ms. Nicole McGill, and Ms. Tracy Gardner shared the implementation plan at Gainsborough Elementary School. They described the process of selecting the students participating in All in Virginia, as well as the staffing and scheduling processes. They also explained the curriculum was selected based on the needs of the building, particularly spelling and phonics. Ms. Tara Woolover, the principal at James Wood Middle School, gave an update on All in Virginia for her school. She explained that her students and teams meet after school on Tuesday and Wednesday and focus on math, reading, and homework, and help, homework help, and social emotional learning stations. She shared that the healthy snacks and transportation are provided. Dr. Angelo shared his hopes for an even more robust summer learning program for students. Dr. Jerry Putt, the principal at Frederick County Middle School, shared that sixth-grade students participating in middle school athletics fosters high-quality, school-based, interpersonal relationships, and ensures that each school can field a team in every sport. He explained that this is divided into subvarsity and varsity, and that most of the surrounding middle school, surrounding middle schools permit sixth-grade participation. Mr. Tyler Thomas and Mrs. Allison Post reviewed the Culinary Arts Program at the Dow J. Howard Center. They shared that this program is hosted by Blue Ridge Community and Technical College and offers 17 college credits, but that only 20 spots are available. Ms. Caitlin Jordan reviewed the proposed amendments to policy 429P and 403P. The meeting adjourned at 7:17 PM. Additional meeting minutes regarding the information covered have been provided to each of the board members. Are there any questions from board members about the information shared in the instruction committee meeting on February 8th? This is an excellent meeting. I feel like the instruction committees are the best. We got to talk about the culinary arts program, adding sixth-grade sports, the tutoring programs that we have, and it's just, I feel like the instruction meetings just keep getting better. So it's a pleasure to serve on this committee, and we do have three action items coming out of here. I move to recommend the full board approve the culinary arts program.
Second.
So moved.
We need that as a motion.
We need a motion?
She made the motion.
No, you recommended, you didn't make a motion.
I move to recommend. Is that...
It's to move to recommend, which is, is a motion, but it is slightly confusing, so it would be better just to say I move that the board approve.
Okay. I would move that the full board approve the culinary arts program.
Second. It's been a motion that the board approved the culinary arts program and has been properly seconded. Any discussion on this?
I just have a question. When does the culinary arts program start? What's the target date?
I believe that the principal at Dow J. Howard has the official, Dr. Angelo?
I can answer that question. It will start next fall.
Awesome. Okay. Fantastic.
And if I remember, was it to start with 25 students?
20.
20.
And also to the sixth-grade sports. I'm passionate about that. Having graduated from this system 23 years ago, we had sixth-grade sports. They were super important. So it's my understanding that those are getting re-implemented, and when?
So, just a point of clarification, we're not implementing sixth-grade sports. We are allowing sixth-grade students to participate in sports, and that will start next fall as well.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you for that clarification.
Mr. Chair?
Sir?
If I may, the culinary program, you said, when does that start? It will start for next school year. Next school year? Right. And as board members, we're welcome to free samples of that, correct?
I have already asked that question.
All right. Just, just clarifying.
We audit the classes as well.
Yeah.
If there's only 25 spots for this, how are these students selected?
I would invite Mr. Thompson up to give an overview of the selection process. There is a selection process for many of our programs that are limited in enrollment, but not limited in interest. So, Mr. Thompson, do you mind coming up and talking about the selection process for...
Yes, thank you, Chairman, members of the board, Superintendent. So what we do for a selection process is, students, we look at their discipline, their unexcused absences, and then we look at their GPA. And then that, there's a, some metrics we put in there to put a value on the unexcused attendance, and then, as well as their discipline history. And then, if there's 40 applicants, we select the top 20. But again, I'm going to say it every time that I have an opportunity, it's a shame that we even have to select kids. And hopefully, one day, we'll get there to where we're not doing that.
Do they, do they, you're going to put out something and they're going to sign up for it? Is that the...
Yeah, so, maybe I'll just offer you how we advertise our program. So essentially, what happens is, we have a team of folks that goes to each high school, and we work with the high school principals to fit the best needs of their individual schools. And then, our, our SRO that was here earlier this evening, Deputy Caden Thurgood, and Ms. Nicole Johnson, who's our senior lead teacher, is back here this evening, worked together to create our application portal, essentially, and it's a Google form. Then they have like a QR code, and they have a link that they can click on. So they go out to the schools, the kids can take their phone, they can click right on the QR code right there, and then they can fill it out, or they can go on their Chromebook, click on the link, essentially, and fill it out from, from that process and procedure. Then it backfills on our, on our site on the response sheet to give the student's name, and then some other details, like grade level, things of that nature. Then we work with Dr. Roy's office, who's here as well this evening, and they backfill some of the data for us in terms of GPA, discipline, history, and then unexcused absences. And that formulates into a formula where we identify essentially a number of absences equals one through four, and then same thing with discipline entries, and then GPA. Then that all comes together, totals up, and then we sort it by that number. So it's, is, is, or I mean, is an objective process as it possibly can be. So does, that might be more than you were looking for, but just to give you all the details.
Before it goes down, before it can get to that point, you all have to approve it so it's in our program as studies, which is why you're voting on it this evening. So it has to be in the course selection in order for us to even begin the process of selecting students.
Any other discussion? Okay. All those in favor of approving the Culinary Arts Program signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved.
All right. The second action item is to recommend the full board approve the proposed amendments to policy 429P and 403P, and I do so move.
Second. Okay, we have a recommendation of the, the full board approve the proposed amendments to policy 429P and 403P, and it has been properly seconded. Any discussion?
Just for clarity, why is this not broken up into two different motions?
There's not really a reason. It is okay that they are together. They, they work together. The board can choose to divide them if you wish, but it's fine for them to be moved together.
And, Mr. Chair, if I may, as, as Mrs. Jordan so eloquently described, they're, they're the same policy that reference each other, so that's why we kept it together. Typically, we would have, we would have sparred them out. If that's what you all would like to do, we can, but since they're so similar, we kept them together.
Okay. Just one...
Great question.
Just a question.
Yes, sir.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of the proposed amendments to the policies signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries.
The final recommendation is for the full board to approve the meeting minutes from the instruction committee meeting held on February 8th, 2024, and I do so move.
Mr. Chair, before you second that, Nina has done a fantastic job doing these minutes. There was one little typo on page two. Just would like to recommend to make an amendment to change it from Mr. Tyler Thompson to Mr. Ben Thompson. Got your back, Ben. Just a minor technicality. Thank you. Sorry, Mrs. White.
And, Mr. Chair, if I may, if Ms. White will move to amend her motion to adopt the men, to adopt the minutes as presented with the one change regarding the name from Tyler Thompson to Ben Thompson.
Thank you.
And you may say so, so moved, if you wish.
So I would like to amend my previous motion. I would like to recommend the full board approve the meeting minutes from the instruction committee meeting held on February 8th, 2024, with the correction of Mr. Tyler Thompson to Mr. Ben Thompson, and I do so move.
Second. Okay, it's been motioned and properly seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next, we have the Personnel Committee Report.
A meeting of the Personnel Committee of Frederick County School Board was held on February 9th, 2024. The meeting was called to order at 4:33 PM, and a copy of the minutes has been provided to each board member. During the meeting, Mrs. Ricketts gave a personnel committee overview. She also provided updates, including staffing updates for fiscal year 2024 regarding teacher vacancies and professional vacancies by content. Ms. Ricketts shared the professional vacancies filled between July 1st, 2023, and January 26th, 2024, as well as current support vacancies as of January 26th, 2024. She also discussed the current turnover rate broke down into job categories. She shared that the rate is 16% is not ideal, and the goal is to reduce that, this number through different approaches. Ms. Ricketts discussed the plans for the reorganization of the human resources... Ms. Frickley discussed the plans for the reorganization of the Human Resources, HR Department, and the reasons behind it. Each member of the HR department introduced themselves and gave a brief description of their job duties. This includes Ms. Christine Campbell, Ms. Rachel Biner, Ms. Jessica Brown, Ms. Rochelle Lloyd, Ms. Kathy Fink, Ms. Lisa Try, and Ms. Caroline Crawford. Ms. Frickley shared plans for two future positions within the HR Department to provide more support for staff as well as to the directors. The two positions will be supervisor of recruitment and retention, and supervisor of employee services. Ms. Frickley explained the new awards and recognition programs to the new school board members. This was previously introduced in October of 2023. The new categories that were added were Principal of the Year, Assistant Principal of the Year, Counselor of the Year, and First Class Teacher of the Year. Ms. Jordan reviewed the proposed amendments to Policy 506P, prohibition against harassment and retaliation. The proposed amendment to Policy 504P, equal opportunity, employment opportunity, non-discrimination. The meeting adjourned at 5:18 PM. Additional details regarding the information covered at the committee meeting are included in the minutes provided to the board members. Are there any questions from board members about information shared at the Personnel Committee meeting held on February 9?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Atkins. The only question I have, and Dr. Hummer, Ms. Frickley, you all might be able to answer this one. The, we often hear, and we just went through budget season, folks in the community talk about the administration being top-heavy. With the two future positions within the HR Department, being for recruitment, retention, and then the one for supervisor of employee services, I totally understand that is where we need to go as far as recruitment, retention, and then employee services as well, kind of retaining those people. Is there any way, because the first one is recruitment and retention, is there any way that could be done by one person? Or is two positions absolutely necessary for this? Is there something that we can look at and kind of maybe doing there? I mean, two positions, that's a lot.
So there's a couple layers to your questions there, Mr. Atkins. I would argue that we are not top-heavy. We are understaffed when you compare us and look at other school divisions, especially with the day-to-day operations that we're doing. One of the things that I did promise to you all is that I would be good stewards of our dollar, and that we would make sure that we were getting staff and students in our school buildings and in front of our students. When you take a look at the work that our HR office does for a school division that has 14,000 students and 2,500 staff, I had tasked our HR department to take a look at other school divisions comparable to our size, and we are significantly, not just understaffed, we are significantly understaffed. There are numerous staff in her office that are overworked. There are numerous staff in her office that there's things that we want to do with the retention recruitment, as well as the day-to-day operations. I give a lot of credit to Mrs. Frickley and Mrs. Campbell in regards to all of the, just the investigations that happen on a day-to-day. Our executive director and our assistant director should not be doing those on a day-to-day because there's other things that need to be happening and doing. The other piece that I would like to mention here, Mr. Atkins, by the way, thank you for that question because I know we get that a lot, is we were able to move some positions around. These aren't positions that we are asking you to approve. These are just, we wanted to make sure that you, and I did mention this to you all a couple months ago, but I wanted her to present this to you all in regards to what the organization will look like. So there's no approval for this because we were able to move those positions around so that we're able to function as a functional HR office. Because we are here to service the principals. And in order to do that, we need the staff in order to do that. So again, appreciate those questions, and we can then continue to further break down the org chart, which we've shared with you, but that's essentially why we landed on those two positions.
And I don't disagree. I'm just kind of bringing up the question to answer the questions for the public.
Absolutely.
I know we'll get the same questions later on, and now I can refer to, please play the YouTube video.
Yes, yes, or have them reach out. More than happy to explain it. Thank you, Mr. Atkins.
And, Mr. Chair, and to Mr. Atkins' point as well, Ms. Frickley, if I could put you on the spot, I did have the privilege of attending this meeting and being kind of in the gallery to watch. You, one thing that I hit on, I'm a numbers person. So one thing, although it was either you or a member of your staff mentioned, is we, there's a ratio, an industry standard ratio for a corporation, which essentially we are. We're, we are a, basically a two-thirds of a billion-dollar business.
Exactly.
So, what, can you share those stats? I want to say it was 1 to 30, but I may not be correct. One HR professional per?
Well, it's one to every 100 to 125. So for being generous, 125 people typically, when you're talking about internal customer service, like the HR team, our customers are our employees. And so, you know, just to put that into perspective, that's almost 3,000 when you count subs, which we manage in HR, full-time and part-time folks. And so when you're talking about an organization that really wants to be in a proactive state, that industry standard is one HR professional to every 1 to 125. So when you break that down with the addition, not addition in the sense of full-time FTEs, but in the restructure of our two new supervisors, that number will come in roughly at one to every 300 of our staff that we're charged with taking care of.
Excellent. I was missing a zero on there, so thank you. One to 300. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I move that the full board approve the proposed amendment to Policy 506P.
Second. Recommend that the board approve the proposed amendment, Policy 506P. It has been seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Carries?
I move the full board approve the proposed amendment to Policy 504P.
Second. Move the board, the board approved, the board approved the proposed amendment to Policy 504P. Any discussion? Been properly seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And carries?
I move the full board approve the minutes for the Personnel Committee meeting held on February 9, 2024.
Second. Been moved to approve the minutes of the Personnel Committee meeting, and it's been properly seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And carries? Next, we have the Building and Grounds Committee meeting report.
A meeting of the Building and Grounds Committee of Frederick County Public Schools was held on February 12, 2024. The meeting was called to order at 4:34 PM. A copy of the minutes has been provided to each board member. During the meeting, Mr. Davis shared the capital projects list highlights. He shared that the work on the HVAC system and transportation, and the work on the roof membrane at Melbrook High School is complete, and the installation of the 20 clear roof pyramids is underway. A completion date of February 24, 2024 is anticipated. He also shared that the fire alarm projects at Apple Pie Elementary School and Dal J. Howard are in the engineering phase with RRM engineering. The interior painting project at Sherrando High School has started, and the resurfacing of the asphalt at NREP has been completed. Mr. Lawrence, the executive director of Frederick Water, thank you for being here, explained that the Frederick Water is requesting both permanent and temporary easements on the Armel Elementary School and Transportation Facility properties for construction of a sewer line to the Parkin's Mill Waste Water Treatment Plant. He shared that the plans for this project are avoiding the planned parent drop-off area of the elementary school, and they will bore under the driveway so no traffic will be impeded, or be interrupted. He also assured that no construction would be performed during the school year. Mr. Kenny shared that the renovations at Indian Hollow Elementary School are complete and have received the final inspection from the building office and fire marshal's office as of January 31, 2024. He also shared that work is continuing on the core areas of James Wood High School, and construction continues on the gym, concourse, addition, the cafeteria, the media center, and the kitchen areas. Mr. Kenny introduced Mr. Michael Marsuch. I'm going to mess up this name. Mr. Michael Mars-
Marshir.
Marshir, thank you. Appreciate the help. And Mr. Ben Motley from RRM Architects. What, once again, that name. Marshir? Thank you. Mr. Marshir gave an overview of the bid process for projects. He also described the four different project delivery methods. Design, Bid, Build, DBB. Construction, Management at Risk, CMAR. Public-Private Educational Act, PPEA. And Design, Build, DB, and their advantages and disadvantages. He also gave a deeper understanding of the CMAR method and shared the design overview of the James Wood High School project with CMAR. Mr. Kenny gave a brief summary of the bid process and explained that regardless of what method is chosen, there is a process that has to be followed to choose not only the construction manager, CM, but also the architectural and engineering firm, the A&E. He also discussed that there is a committee established for both the CM and the AE firm selection process that involves many departments, including instruction, planning and design, finance, construction facilities. Mr. Tim Collin, administrator of Safety and Security, discussed the Weapons Detection System Pilot Program. He shared that no particular incidences have occurred on the, on any FCPS campuses, but that this was a proactive measure to protect students, staff, families, and visitors. He explained that this system is called the Open Gate and is a groundbreaking weapons detection system that does not require removal of backpacks, purses, or bags, only weighs 25 pounds, runs on rechargeable Milwaukee batteries, and can be used indoor and outdoor. He shared that the cost for each system is roughly $17,500. The meeting adjourned at 6:03 PM. Additional details regarding the committee meeting are included in the minutes provided to board members. Do board members have any questions about what was covered in the Building and Grounds Committee meeting held on February 12?
Yes, I do. I noticed on Indian Hollow Elementary School that the entrance to the school had a covering where when the buses drop off the kids, they have to walk approximately 50 to 75 foot to go inside the main door. It has been removed. I was wondering if there was going to be a replacement to cover the children when they get off of the bus in adverse weather.
Are you talking about the, the covering right at the main entrance, not just a temporary thing?
No, it wasn't temporary. It was structurally a steel covering.
You're talking about the awning?
The awning.
The awning that was going across. Yeah, that was, that was removed. I wasn't part of that process for it to be removed, Mr. Funes, but that would be a CIP item that we would have to take a look at. Not all of our elementary schools have that. That's something, Mr. Chair, if we want to add to Buildings and Grounds, that would be at the will of the board if that's something you'd like for us to consider. That was removed as part of the renovation of Indian Hollow for numerous reasons.
Well, that protected the kids when they got off the bus, and in inclement weather, they would be running to get into the school. It was, I feel, a necessary structure.
Again, as I mentioned, not all of our elementary schools have that. So if that's something that the will of the board would like for us to install at all of our schools, we can take a look at that, Mr. Chair. Dr. Angelo, I don't want to put you on the spot. I know you were here, the only one here, part of that conversation, Mrs. Camery. So I don't know if you want to share any insight. We can look into it too, not to put you on the spot.
It was an unexpected removal due to safety that was discovered through the process of removing the exterior and replacing it with brick, and it wasn't in the budget to replace it, so it wasn't replaced.
Well, when I saw the renovation, it could have stayed there even with the brickwork that they were doing on the facade of the building.
Yeah, that was the plan, but it was, it became a safety issue. It was discovered through inspection. It was a safety issue that we didn't anticipate once they tore out part, the part of the building in the front that it was attached to. And so it had to be removed in order to maintain safety. And so it was replaced as far out as honestly the budget would allow, which was from the sidewalk back. But the rest of it that goes, that used to go along the sidewalk was not able to be replaced because of budget.
Well, I can understand the high school kids, they can fend for themselves, but this is middle school. These are little kids. And they really need the protection during the inclement weather when they get off the buses. Because I was a bus driver, and I dropped off the kids at that school, and it was very disorganized. And not having that cover on there, I feel, is a hazard. The snow, they would slip on the sidewalk. The approach of the school is not safe.
Dr. Hummer, is there any way that we could take a look at that? Maybe have, have those numbers put and brought up to Building and Grounds for consideration?
Let me be clear. Are we looking at adding awnings at every elementary school? I want to be clear on what we're working on, but whatever you all just.
What I would like to see for Building and Grounds would be maybe how much it would cost at every school. Not try to do it all at once, but, you know, we can knock out the elementary schools to Mr. Funes's point. It'd be a little bit more chaotic getting those kids off the bus than the high schoolers. But yeah, I would, I would like to look at that as it is a safety concern, and just kind of see where we land and see where that adds into our CIP priorities.
Okay, sounds good.
If I may, we need to have a number of conversations about material length, height.
Of course.
I could never price it out without any of those parameters in place, so we'll talk further if that's okay with you.
100%. It doesn't have to happen tomorrow, but down the road.
Sounds perfect. I look forward to working with you on that.
Appreciate it.
Just a point of interest, I was more concerned with the younger children. It doesn't have to be at every school, but at least, but little ones, I think it's important.
Any other discussion? Mr. Atkins?
All righty. We have a, we have three items coming out for consideration. I move that the full board approve the Frederick Water easement.
Second. Okay, so it's been recommended to the full board approve the Frederick Water easement and has been properly seconded. Any discussion on this? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries?
Recommend the full board approve the Weapons Detection, Weapons Detection System Pilot Program, and I do so move.
Second.
All right, we have a recommendation and it's been properly seconded for the board to approve the Weapons Detection System Pilot Program. Is there any discussion on this?
Yes, Mr. Chair. I just want to, you know, keep everybody in mind, everybody keep this in mind, that this is just a pilot program. We are just testing this. This is something that, you know, if the board, you know, finds this is a big help working with our security administrator and administration, if there's something that will help protect students, it's something we'll probably move forward, and we'll probably look at this system, maybe a few others down the road. But safety and security at these schools is one of our top, if not the top, priority. So just wanted to add that caveat in there.
Okay, no further discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Sir.
Sorry. I just wanted to put out there that this was a really difficult decision for me personally, having grown up in a small community. And then realizing too that none of the schools that had this- And then realizing too that none of the schools that had this shooting, that have had shootings at their schools ever thought it could happen to them. And honestly, that's probably the way a lot of people in our community feel about it here. But as we've seen across our country, it can happen to, to them, it can happen to us. But again, I've, I've struggled with this decision, not because I don't think the safety of our students is important, but that I don't want to believe that it could happen to us. So I just wanted to put that out there as an FYI.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed?
Opposed.
Carries.
All right, and finally, recommend to the full board they approve the minutes for the Building and Grounds meeting on February 12th, 2024, and I do so move.
Second.
Okay, we have a recommendation that the full board approve the minutes of Buildings and Grounds meeting on February 12th, and it has been properly seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries. And last, we have another Finance Committee report.
Back to me. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Finance Committee report for the Finance Committee meeting dated February 12th, 2024. A meeting of the Finance Committee of the Frederick County Public School Board was held on February 12th, 2024. The meeting was called to order at 6:15 PM and a copy of the minutes has been provided to each board member. During the meeting, Mrs. Anderson answered board member questions from the previous Finance Committee meeting regarding the reasons why teachers leave Frederick County Public Schools, the cost of providing all classified staff with 25 years or more with an additional pay of $3,000, as well as the cost of commuting to Loudoun County. She also discussed the baseline budget changes, which represents the cost to continue the current, current operations. She explained the changes to the baseline budget, which includes a reduction to instruction and administration departments leading to a savings of $485,000 for next year. A 10% increase to FCPS's contributions to health insurance in the amount of $1,600,000, as well as a $9 million reduction to restricted state and federal grants, primarily expiring federal funds provided through the Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Funds Act, ESER. Mrs. Curry explained the different approaches FCPS takes in order to avoid material and food waste, such as non-disposable meal trays, using production records to predict the amount of food to prepare, comparing the predictions to the actual needs, actual meals that were served and adjacent, and adjust accordingly, as well as cooking fresh batch items. She also discussed the school nutrition outreach programs, including open houses, paper copy applications in English and Spanish to apply for the free reduced lunch meal, or correction, reduced meal plans, both breakfast and lunch, and information and applications being promoted on the school district's website and social media. She shared the income chart for free and reduced meals and the current balance of the unpaid lunch-breakfast debt. She explained that the debt is currently at $128,000, but is projected to reach $150,000 by the end of the school year, and that this bad debt must be written off as an operating loss and may not be absorbed by the nonprofit school food service account. Regardless, she explained, no student is ever turned away from a meal. She also discussed the factors that influence the balance write-offs. Mrs. Curry shared the components of a federal reimbursed meal. She also discussed the community eligibility provision, CEP, which is a non-pricing meal service option for schools and school districts in low-income areas. She explained that under the CEP, schools serve breakfast and lunch at no cost to all enrolled students without collecting household free and reduced applications. She shared that a federal formula is used to determine whether the amount reimbursed is at the higher federal fee rate, free rate, or a lower federal paid rate. She also shared that FCPS is not required to participate in the CEP. Mrs. Curry explained the benefits of offering the CEP division-wide and that Shenandoah County, Warren County, and Winchester City operate at 100% CEP. Mrs. Curry shared a parent perspective of not every school being 100% CEP and the confusion this has caused. She also shared that lunch participation has increased in schools that receive 100% CEP. Mrs. Curry explained that all, not all students will participate in this program and the proposed amount of 2.2 million is an estimate. Mrs. Curry discussed the CEP federal reimbursement formula and the reimbursable rates. Mrs. Anderson reviewed the school nutrition fund. She shared that this account is a nonprofit governmental account that holds revenues specific towards the school nutrition operations and that the greatest amount comes from the federal government, with FCPS's operating fund transferring $60,000 into this fund as well to pay down student negative account balances. She also explained the different options for CEP. Mrs. Anderson discussed the different school nutrition fund revenues by CEP option. Mrs. Anderson also shared the different school nutrition fund expenses by CEP option. Mrs. Camery discussed the transportation request of $260,000 for two new buses. She shared that the lifespan of four bus is estimated at roughly 15 years or 200,000 to 250,000 miles, and that FCPS currently owns 17 buses that are 26 years or older. Mrs. Camery also discussed the safety and security equipment purchase request in the amount of $100,000 for intruder locks and cameras. Mrs. Camery reviewed the contract award for the Siemens Industries for Building Automation Systems Services in the amount of $2 million through ESER III funds. The meeting adjourned at 7:25 PM. Additional details regarding the information covered at this committee meeting are included in the minutes provided to board members. Just as an editorial comment, thank you to Mrs. Camery and her staff for providing a lot of questions, a lot of answers to some very specific questions from myself and my committee. You guys have been working overtime getting those answers to us. It's greatly appreciated. Also, I wanted to expand upon just briefly the $2 million for the Siemens contract through the ESER III funds. The ESER III funds refers to the third tranche of federal funds received to us via COVID that have since expired, so those funds have already been received and they need to be spent, and this is one of the causes that we're spending them for. So just for clarification. Additional details regarding the information covered at the committee meeting are included in the minutes provided to board members. Are there any questions from board members about the information shared at the Finance Committee meeting held on February 12th?
Questions?
All right. Mr. Chairman, I move to recommend, move to recommend? Did I get that right, Ms. Jordan?
I would just use a move.
I move, okay. I have 46 more meetings to get this right, thank you. Mr. Chairman, I move to, that the full board approve the Building Automation Systems Services in the amount of $2 million for the Siemens contract award.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to recommend the full board approve the Building Automation Systems Services in the amount of $2 million, and it has been properly seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have one more motion. I move the full board approve the minutes from the Finance Committee meeting held on February 12th, 2024.
Second.
Okay, we have a recommendation for the full board to approve the minutes from Finance Committee meeting, and it has been seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries. That is it for committee reports. Board member comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Atkins?
I would like to go, and this is in any certain order, just the kind of stuff that I was picking, picking out, but a lot of things go in, one, to our finance team, fellow board members, community stakeholders who have reached out, you know, teachers who have voiced their opinions, staff members have voiced their opinions, classified staff. We hear you. We, we want to get things done, we want to get things right, want to retain and keep you, we want to bring on new, new folks, and we want to, you know, have, have this machine well-oiled and running for our students out here. You know, I, I encourage everybody to go out there and, to attend the FCPS 101 sessions where you get to play games with Ms. Camery, and the board financial, or the board finance committee one is, is a tough one where we're moving chips around and seeing where we can, you know, move things in when, hopefully it doesn't happen, the board supervisors cuts, or doesn't cut, but doesn't award all of the funding that we're requesting this year, because that's going to be another process. So just because we've approved it to go downtown does not mean it's where it stops. You know, we might have to make adjustments here and there, but hopefully what we've got stays set in stone, and you guys can take a much-needed break. Next, I'd like to go ahead and say thank you to Ms. Nina DeSantis. She, she is the one that keeps this machine going up here for the, for the, the folks sitting up on the diocese. You've, I, I don't know, when you do, you sleep, you know, you're, you're constantly, you know, taking our emails, our phone calls, text messages, you know, and I know with my schedule at work, it's, it's tough, so for me, thank you. I really appreciate that. Our SROs, I, I'm glad that we got to recognize them for, and have their day up on February the 15th. You know, these guys are, guys and gals are the, the front line for our students, you know, they're, we don't have those security systems in place yet, but we're working on it. We're, we're, you know, giving them the tools, hopefully to help, help assist them and recognize threats before they happen, but those are the boots on the ground that's going to take care of it when, when something arises. So to them, thank you, much needed, much needed more than just a day. You guys do a fantastic job. Our students, you know, probably the, the most favorite part I have of all these meetings is our student recognition. You get to actually see what they're doing, they get recognized for that, you know, which motivates them. You know, the robotics program, that's awesome. I want to kind of go tour that now. And kind of see what all goes into it. It's, it's weird that, you know, besides just the reading, writing, and arithmetic, we are branching out to see what other services will be provided for these students to make them more of a success, successful in life. The world is changing. We do have robotics out there, you know, go down here to HUD, they have robotics. You keep, Trex has got robotics, you know, we've got a lot of stuff here in Northern Virginia that do that, and we'd like to provide them with the best opportunities possible. Also wanted to say thank you. I've got my artwork back behind me, but I, I didn't know this till Ms. White held hers up. All of them are different. It's not just one print and, you know, just photocopied it, you know. It's cool having these little gifts that, you know, the students provide to us and we can take them back and, and, and kind of cherish them. It's our, our time on the board, it's really thoughtful and I appreciate it. I know other board members do too. Finally, you know, hearing the citizen comments, the one that strikes me is the racism at James Wood. It does have to stop, you know, and it's a disciplinary problem to Ms. Martin's point. I know our staff is on it. You do have the, the support of the board. Exactly, you know, she's, she's right here with you, you know, we are, I, I think it's awesome that you, you come do that as a parent, right? You know, you're coming up and addressing your concerns, and we might see it in email, you know, and we do send them up to, to the superintendent, he disseminates it down to the appropriate staff levels, but it's really impactful to hear a community member come up and actually stay up in front of the diocese. It holds a lot more weight, so I, I really appreciate that. I'm not saying that, that we overlook other emails, but having somebody actually come up face to face, I appreciate that, and, you know, I, I hope that, you know, we get this issue solved. I'm not saying we're going to solve it for the whole country. I wish it could happen, but let's, let's work on the chunks that we got, and then I look forward to hearing back from you personally, see where we're at, how we're doing, how, you know, because we've got to keep the superintendent accountable, just like he keeps the staff accountable. So please come back and let us know. Give us a report card. Thank you.
Mr. Chair? I have a few things I'd like to bloviate about as well. I got a thesaurus for Christmas. First, I'd like to thank Tyler, I'm sorry, Ben, for letting us in on the culinary program and all that it entails. I'd like to second the sentiments of, of our board and thanking everyone involved with providing us the information. I had no idea before coming to this board how much work, I mean, I knew there was a lot of work, but just the amount of work that you good people do for the students and for the community, so thank you for that. I am disappointed, as I'm sure you're aware, or at least my colleagues are aware, of our decision this evening to not entertain any CEP, I guess, system in place, other than the nine existing schools. Food security is a real issue, and it's, and here comes the saurus again. It, it permeates our school and it's pervasive throughout our country. It doesn't take much research to find this information and the data about that. There will be a number of students who will unfortunately bear witness to the consequences of us not addressing this, this evening. I, I hope that the advertisement that we do for those schools that are saying that we won't turn a student away encourages more students to take advantage of this, and the right students to take advantage of this. So I, I just hope that that happens, but yeah, I'm, I'm pretty disappointed about this. And then finally, thank you, ma'am, for coming up and speaking. I think it's very important that our community does that, because if we don't know that it's broken, we can't fix it. And I think that, you know, the challenges for administration and even for Dr. Hummer is to provide a, a place that expresses zero tolerance for this type of activity that occurs, and to also have real consequences for those students who are being racist or are bullying students to the point that they no longer attend our schools because it's just not acceptable at all in any situation. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Further comments? Okay. Announcements, we have a Board of Supervisors budget presentation tomorrow, correct? And that's at 7:00 PM, correct?
5:30.
Oh, 5:30, okay.
And that's my presentation to the Board of Supervisors. Yes, Mr. Chair.
And the next school board meeting will be March 19th, 2024, at 7 o'clock. I got that one right. All right. Do we have a motion for adjournment?
Mr. Chair, I move to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
That's been, motion to adjourn and properly seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned.